If I could please have everyone rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so everyone is present except Grace. If I could get an approval of the agenda, please.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Gene and Scott. Communications, we do not have anybody signed up for open period for patron comments, so we're going to move on to governance. Summer project update. Mike, Gag.
Good evening. Yeah, little summer update on what we had done this week in project, this summer in projects. First about the roof. As you can see on FY22, we had Beasley and John Kerry left over from last summer due to labor shortage. So those two roofs did get done back in June, so those are 100% complete. And this year in FY23, we had Beerbomb, Melville, and Trotwine, which was shaved roofing. And they did get Beerbomb done during spring break back in March. They did start Point with the material supply. All the supplies got delayed this summer, so they finally got supplies in about second, third week in July. So they did get back section of Point done. And the plan is to, they pulled out yesterday, they got that back section done, they're gonna come back and finish up the rest in summer of '23. Then Trotwine, in Trotwine, they are going to, they finished about 60% out there, and they're going to finish the rest up during the school year. That is just a cover-up, so it'll be not as noisy as a tear-off. So we worked with the principal, and we're gonna give them a little space to do some staging, then we'll complete that work in the next two to three weeks. Woolen will start summer of '23 due to the supply shortage. And Washington Middle, they're staging over there, and they're gonna work during the school year as well to get that complete. And that should be about three to four weeks on that project. On the Melville Senior, they have not started yet as well, and I got a meeting with the roofer in Jason tomorrow to discuss if it's possible to get some staging here for, do some work during the school year as well. Any questions on roofs? I'll go on to HVAC. We did a couple of projects at Beasley Point and Oakville Elementary. Those were roof, replacement rooftops. And also, we did some VAV work inside the building. That work went smooth. Those are all complete. Rogers Elementary, they're about 98% complete. They are doing some work in the boiler room currently. If I got a few weeks to go, they'll just be working the boiler room, not bothering anybody there. So that work should be complete in about two to two and a half weeks in the boiler room. Asphalt, we did some ceiling and striping at those locations. We also did some concrete work for the Beasley Drive, Beasley-John Kerry Drive. We had those kind of rough patch coming in the entrance there by the gate. We had that bed seams dug out and re-poured, so that got reopened yesterday. So that turned out good. Kitchen ceiling replacement at Beasley, that was, that included a new ceiling, painted the, all this blaze block got painted, kind of brightened up the kitchen. And also, Katie got some new serving line over there as well. So that is, that all passed. We had a last inspection today, so we are good to go over there. And then Tuck Pointing, we just awarded that a few weeks ago. So the pool will be, probably in the next three or four weeks, they'll start the pool this fall. And then Point and Woolen will be done summer of '23. I believe that worked. Questions on all that?
So the delays you had were primarily materials and not labor?
Yeah, last year was labor, this year was a supply chain.
Yeah, because I remember that last year you were just trying to find people and you couldn't, and materials were fine. So it looks like you flipped around.
This year, they kept pushing the material back and back, and it just kept every, every two weeks that it said, it was, you know, it was like a two-week pushback every time, so.
So what was the lead time on some of these materials that they were looking at? Was it like months?
It was months, yeah, it was about two months, yeah.
So hopefully by beginning of next year, we'll get the stuff on hand for the summer and just plow right through it.
This supply chain will be better next year, and we won't be...
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next is Prop S update.
All right, most of the stuff that Mike talked about were all things that we've done through our Prop R capital or regular capital piece, or Prop A capital stuff. He mentioned briefly about Rogers piece of HVAC. Really, I'm gonna hit on kind of all the other projects. So at Beerbomb, which is being completed by Wright Construction, we've known kind of all along that that project will go on throughout the school year, not able to tear it down and rebuild it in a summer. But we've got offices, we're relocated early in the summer. That front end is completely torn down, a big hole there, getting ready to start on foundations. We were, and footings, we were really concerned with Beerbomb, that students in that kind of wing, if you think about the old entrance immediately to the left, the piece that went down there, so there's what, like eight, nine classrooms down there, that that was gonna be completely separate, so that kids were gonna have to go outside to go to cafeteria, to go to PE, those kinds of things. But we were able to punch a hole through a wall and fashion a kind of a doorway without a door, so that our students will be able to move from that wing into the main part of the building without having to go outside. So that's been really, really good. As we prepare for school to start on Monday, however, the building does not have water yet. So the work for that continues to kind of get that done. And we'll see. We've dealt with water main breaks before, and schools being out of water, so we kind of know how to deal with that. It's something we've done in the past. So we have that contingency if we need to. Oakville Elementary, the parking lot has gone pretty well. This photo shows while they were laying asphalt kind of on the bottom half, or the kind of the half of the parking lot closest to Jaeger. That's completely, the first lift of pavement is in. It's still gonna come back with a final one, and that won't happen until the remainder of all the asphalt is done, and the top layer will be done kind of all at one time. But it is now usable. Did they get it striped today? It was not when I was over there.
They're putting it back there.
So they put in some temporary striping. So we've kind of planned all summer for Oakville Elementary to probably not have enough parking, but with opening up this lot and being able to stripe that lower part, we'll be good to go. This construction on the parking lot piece will go into the fall. It'll, you know, it's shooting for completion in early November. And because, you know, parent drop-off and pickup has been in the back, that's not possible under this. So this is significantly impacts pickup and drop-off. So Megan Ochoa, the principal there, has been repeatedly communicating with families about what the procedures will be for drop-off and pickup. So we're gonna want them to drop off before the buses come, so kind of drop off kind of early. And we don't want pickup to happen until after the buses are off the lot. So we're kind of suggesting that people stage at Oakville High School to keep them off of Jaeger and Melbourne. So we'll see if that happens. The other thing that we're asking is, as they exit onto Jaeger, so that traffic flows as smoothly as possible, to go right. Right? Just, just to keep that traffic moving. So, but that, we should have access to the back lot sometime in November. Moving on to Blades, Blades is being done by Aspire. The offices have been relocated. We have a temporary entrance into Blades, and we've got temporary walls to kind of separate the construction areas, which are the old office, which you can kind of see that photo on the left, and then what was the old music room. So we got areas of construction going on there, got walls up to keep kids out of those areas and still be able to move around the building. But because of the amount of dust that got produced, and you can see the photo on the left, the amount of saw cutting of concrete that happened, that had to happen. A lot of dust in that building, so it's not as clean and spick and span as what we would normally kind of start a school year with. We're able to do a lot of work, but just not on some hallways on that ground floor. Moving on to Oakville High School, which has been done by Jackson Construction, we still need the glass to come in for the security entrance piece. That was the last I'd heard a day or so. But other than that, mostly it's just punch list items at Oakville High. There, there is a correction that needs to be made in the commons restrooms. Any layperson would walk into the restrooms and go, oh my gosh, these look really nice, especially compared to what they were. And we wouldn't know any different. The challenge is that the ADA stalls, the doors are, and the partitions are too low to the ground. They have to be nine inches off, and they're set at four. So we gotta correct that. So we'll operate as-is until we get the new stuff in, and then we'll make that correction. But really, Oakville High is just punch list items, and, I mean, those restrooms are so much better than what was there before. It's hard to, hard to really see. Bernard Middle is being done by Integra, just like Blades is. We've had supply chain delays on windows and doors. That's been consistent. The storefronts, the windows, the doors, the glass, all of that has been a challenge to get. Moving on to Oakville Elementary on the interior, it, carpet got laid this week, the cove base is down. One little area is tiled. Did we get that waxed? The, this, finally got that waxed. We have to let the tile sit for a little while before we can wax it. But, so you walk through there, and everything looks ready to go, except for any doors. Right? Because we don't have doors. So the offices there have been moved temporarily, so we'll kind of work through that. And as we get the doors, we're able to move in, we'll be able to, should be able to make that move just in the next couple of weeks, hopefully. It's mostly done. Moving on to Rogers Elementary, again, this is Integra. We got a look, we got some work going on outside. Just kind of thinking about Rogers. They started out great there. The finish has been kind of slow. We've had supply chain delays on the storefront. The picture on the left is kind of the front entry. It does have floor tile down in it now, but we just don't have that storefront and stuff to go across there. And then we don't have, the pavement is not finished, which this, the picture on the right is of down in the lower parking lot, which, you know, we can work around that to some extent, but we got a big hole in front of the building. So that's what we can't work around. We've been working with them to try to get that wrapped up. Whether or not it gets completely finished by Monday is still up for grabs, but we do have a contingency plan that is ready to go if we have to pull that over the weekend, so that we can get across that hole in buses. So that's ready to go if we have to do that over the weekend. And then, money-wise, you know, as we've gone along, we spend more money as we get into more construction, and, you know, we still have some money being invested that's been sitting there. So we're almost at $60,000 in interest earnings, which then can go into construction projects as well. And with that, we'll try to attempt any, to answer any questions you might have. It might have to involve Chad or Mike, but we'll try to answer.
Can you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Everybody at the same, everybody at the same time. OES usually has, like Officer Mike or someone out there in the morning directing traffic. Is that gonna, but it's not usually, it's more of a custodian in the afternoon. Is it possible to have police, like, there for directing traffic to help with the?
You wanna speak to the specifics on that, Chad?
Sure. I have the mic. So we have been having ongoing conversations with Officer Mike, Sergeant Zach Sigler, and today, Dalen Schmal was involved in those conversations. Dalen has offered to provide secondary officer support should we need it, but the current plan is to have Officer Mike there both in the morning and afternoon
Awesome.
for consistency purposes. And Sergeant Sigler is willing to kind of own some of that overtime and be flexible with him, so that he can be that consistent presence for us. We also just have an ongoing commitment from Sergeant Sigler to have extra officers in the areas of all of our schools under construction. So we've been talking in ongoing fashion. Today was a good example of that partnership. We're continuing to try to be prepared.
Thanks. Thank you.
Can you explain the water contingency at Beerbomb? And if we have to use it, will it require there to be less water used in the building, sort of on an average daily basis, if we have to use that contingency plan?
So, we're, we're accustomed to having water main breaks that impacted a building's water, and it being there. Kind of same with electrical outages. So we have a trailer kind of full of stuff at Jefferson Barracks that's kind of ready to go with a bunch of stuff that we can get to a school relatively quickly if anything happens. So we can maintain toilets flushing, keep all of that going. We get bottled water, all of that stuff that we'll have ready to go. The biggest impact will be in food service, in terms of what they would feel. Again, food service is, has had to modify kind of in the past. So they're prepared kind of as well to have to serve different food. So they've already been in contact with their suppliers in case we have to pull that trigger.
I assume that with all the progress being made at OES, that all of the permits finally came through from St. Louis County at long last. And my question about Blades is, the dust mitigation, are we gonna be able to contain that during the school day?
So all the dust was really from the demolition, saw cutting concrete, saw cutting block walls, all of that. So now, now we're moving into, all the demolition is finished, so now it's construction which won't generate
Oh, so it's all been hauled out?
That level of dust.
All the concrete's been hauled out and everything already?
All, all of debris's been hauled out. I mean, we had basically plastic hanging from the ceilings for most of the summer to try to contain stuff. But now, all the construction zones are contained inside walls.
And what's it gonna take to bring this school, what's, you know, the, the progress, the portions that are not being worked on to bring them clean, you know, to bring them up to the cleanliness level that we're used to? Or will we not be able to until it's finished?
So the hallway, I would say the hallways where the temporary walls are, that we probably won't wax those, because it will end up with uneven waxing of what's gonna eventually be a hallway there. So we probably won't touch those, but otherwise, you know, we'll, we'll get it eventually.
The classrooms are good, though?
Yes, yes.
The hallway's currently doing a little bit better.
Okay, just not waxed, okay.
Probably not on the duty.
That's fine. I get that.
I mean, they look pretty better.
Okay, good.
They look better. They're just not at the same quality that people would be used to at the start of the year.
Sounds good. It's amazing what's all going on. It's mind-boggling, so.
I, Gene, I walked through Blades today, and I was quite pleased with how well the construction areas were sort of isolated from where the actual work in the school is gonna happen. Yeah, the individual classrooms. So
Good, thank you.
I didn't, I didn't actually feel like the hallways felt dirty per se. In fact, it was quite the opposite. It just, it felt like, like the construction was in two or three different areas, and it was sort of confined to that, those areas.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, a question related to the changing configurations of the schools, and the new staff that we have, and, and security related to the, to the buildings. So what are, what is the district doing to ensure the procedures are followed, and the new staff are up to date with both the normal security procedures, as well as the new procedures related to the changing configurations of the buildings?
Do you wanna address that? Chad is our safety guru.
I will, I'll do my best. So conversations about school safety were part of the back-to-school meetings. In addition to that, the schools that have major construction that will be ongoing throughout the year, Blades and Beerbomb have a two-layer system for security screening and identification. So background checks are conducted on all of those construction workers who will be in our schools working. And additionally, at nine o'clock in Beerbomb and Blades, they will go to the office. We joked with them that they have to form a line like the kids do, and have a raptor screening so that they have that verification on. And again, we'll have secondary officers rotating through schools. We'll have our SROs being present. This has been an ongoing conversation for the staff.
Great. And then, one last question. The idea of a construction manager, can you explain sort of where, what the thinking is on that at this point?
So, you know, going back to the beginning of the summer, and the board had adopted a, had included some language in a resolution around that. So we had issued the RFP, we got two proposals, talked to both of those firms, talked to one of them a little bit more in-depth, got some pricing from them around really, I would say, assistance with, just taking a look at the plans for the ballfields here, just to have another set of eyes, as well as kind of some construction management services relative to the addition at Beerbomb, or the, the front entrance of Beerbomb. And then, as well as engaging around kind of pre-construction bidding and contracting into construction management for the Beerbomb addition that is coming, the storm shelter, library additional classroom. So we had engaged them kind of at, with that. At the same time, we had also kind of advertised to see what we could find in terms of perhaps hiring someone to operate in-house. After kind of looking at all of that, talking with construction management firms, seeing what their pricing would be, it's kind of shocking at what it would cost. So we had kind of thought from the beginning and talked with at least one other district who had kind of hired in-house to have someone manage. So that would be the route that we would probably prefer. When we put that out as a job opening, we only had one applicant, well-qualified applicant. When we put that out as a job opening, we only had one applicant, well-qualified applicant, but a person who wouldn't be able to start until January. So after conversations kind of among us in-house and looking at the cost of a third-party construction manager, we think it would be best and be most efficient for us if we were to try to hire someone who came to work in-house to work as a construction manager, kind of overseeing projects through the course of running out of these, running out the rest of the projects on Prop S, because the pricing that we have is only for the three projects. And by hiring someone in-house, they would be able to oversee kind of all of the smaller projects that we have. So thinking about the qualified person who had applied but wouldn't be able to start until later, we think that it would be appropriate to probably try to advertise that position again, kind of in the mid-fall and see if we can get somebody on in January.
So then the idea, I guess you'd have a recommendation for us in October, November, or something like that?
Well, as an individual, probably November at the earliest of who that might be.
Okay.
That's assuming we advertise kind of late September, early October.
So when, I don't, I'm not clear exactly how this works, but when there's an error such as Oakville High School's wall height, if it's caught, I mean, who ends up paying for the error and who, is there, is there, I mean, obviously if it's the contractor's fault, I assume they pick up the tab to fix it. If it's our fault, we have to pay for it, I assume. And how would a project manager play into that particular situation if, is, are those the things that a project manager would catch hopefully before they're installed incorrectly? And I'm going to assume the reason it's the wrong height is because of code?
Yep. ADA code on the ADA stall and the one next to it, the door and partition have to be nine inches off the floor. So it, if we had somebody who was there every day, either all day or partial day, it's hit or miss whether they would have caught that necessarily, you know. It was, all of us, we just look at it and think, think it looks great. Everybody walks by and think it looks great, and the architects are the one that knows that, oh, that's too low. So project manager, someone who was there every day, maybe when they were installing it, might have caught it a little bit earlier.
Right, so the architect, and I'm not trying to pick on this one particular thing, but let's just use it as an example, the architect drew the plans correctly or drew them in correctly?
It was in the spec, it was in the specs and the drawings at nine inches.
So then the contractor just installed them incorrectly?
Correct.
So then hopefully?
Yeah.
Well, they just have to get a different door, don't they?
Uh, no, it's a little, it's a little more.
I'm not picking on this particular thing, I'm just using it as an example, how much, how much would this particular situation cost us and?
Well, this particular situation is not going to cost us anything but time. But we're, the bill, it's still going to be operational, we'll still be able to use it.
Right.
Well, it'll just have to be corrected when the new supplies come in, the new partitions come in.
So the hope is obviously when there are errors or mistakes, that it doesn't cost the district anything. And I guess that was my original goal of asking about a project manager, is trying to avoid mistakes that in the long run will cost the district more money. I mean, I don't disagree, I don't really want to pay, is, you know, I mean, it's hard to justify that kind of money that a, that a project manager is asking for on three projects, because I can think of lots of things we could do with that money, you know. But on the other hand, if we could save money by not having errors, then I still think it's important that we, like you just suggested, go in-house with a potential project manager. Not that, and I think Mike is, does a great job and is perfectly capable, but he is also tugged into a million different directions all day long, and so it's pretty hard for him to oversee everything.
We think hiring someone in-house who can manage all that is a solution that takes more strain off of our people than having another third-party that we're su, having, you know, in some respects feels like another entity that we're having to deal with, somewhat supervised, kind of deal with. So we think, we think in-house overall is probably a better route for us.
Right, well then you have them 40 hours a week instead of?
Yes.
How many, did you say? Seventy-two hours?
Seventy-two hours a month.
Sorry, go ahead, Jean.
I'm sorry, it was my hope that a project manager could let our educators get back to education.
Right.
And that was the, you know, the intent, and I thought we should be looking, so. You and Mike is covered up and he's got to be in 90 places every day, I'm sure, so.
Yeah, and I agree, that's exactly what I was going to say. I mean, one is, is of course any cost that we could save by having a project manager catch things, but equally as important in my mind is taking burden away from our administrators. You know, I mean, I think it's unreasonable to think that Dr. Gaines or anybody else in central office would catch the height of a, of a door in a bathroom, you know. Not that the project manager would automatically catch things like that, but I totally agree, Jean, let's have our administrators working on focusing on, serving our students and not things like that.
So Scott went to Blades, Beerbomb and? OES. OES, and I went to Rogers, and then I've been around OHS, and it's like, it's crazy to look at the difference, like OHS, I like went there and I was like, I like, honestly, I was jumping for joy, but before I heard about the stall height, I was like, oh my God, everything's perfect, it was done ahead of time, everything looks so nice, I was like, it was honestly, it felt like a blessing. Then you go to Rogers, and like Dr. Gaines said, it looked like we were almost done and then we weren't almost done and here we are. And I think I got brought back down to earth a little bit today. And obviously, I think Dr. Gaines and other people have been trying to prepare us, like, hey, there's going to be some disruption and like, but you don't, it's different when you go to Rogers and you see like a hole in the ground, you're like, ah, this is what they've been trying to prepare me for, and I still wasn't, you know, necessarily prepared. But then I was just talking to someone else today and they're like, yeah, but think about the long-term, like when it all actually gets done. And obviously, you know, we have people's term ending each year for the next three years, but it's like, once it all looks done, like it's a huge net positive for the district, so yeah, it's going to suck. Like, it's obviously not ideal, but this person just told me, it's like, but think about it, like Beerbomb needed the help, Blades needed it, OHS, the security vestibule looks perfect, so that's all I could, you know, it, there are going to be parents who see it for the first time on Monday and they're going to be like, uh-uh, and I think they'll probably react how I do, but, you know, hopefully we've been doing a good enough job. It is, it was, it was tough, especially like at Rogers, it looked done, right? Like, I think the ramp was almost done and then it was like, something was an inch off and then like now there's a hole in the parking lot. And it's like, you know, I don't know, I went like, when it was almost done, I'm like, hey, we're good to go, Rogers done, OHS done, and then it wasn't.
I think, you know, as a general rule, people understand that water rolls downhill, but in, sometimes in these construction projects, you don't always understand what a change here does way down here. So we had to redo the ramp, which meant we had to redo the sidewalk, which meant we had to do this little section out in front of the building, and they poured the ramp, had to redo, had to tear it out and redo it. So that's, that's caused some things, but overall.
Sounds like you need an ADA specialist.
Well, overall, I mean, there was a large volume of work that got done this summer across the district, and there, there are projects that we knew that were not going to be done by the time we got to today. And there are projects that we thought would be a little bit further along by the time that we got today, but overall, we're pretty confident that we'll be able to have school with some disruption to the flow of traffic just around a couple of buildings.
I know you had prepped us about the, you know, the shortages of the vestibules and the glass and the like, how accurate were we on how much of a disruption that was? Were we close, were we not close?
So we've got a lot that's still yet to come in that'll, that'll kind of get us there. So we were hearing, you know, almost right off the bat, that there were concerns with those particular things were going to be delayed. It was some of the things that we weren't expecting, like carpet, carpet got delayed, and some flooring stuff. So, you know, just the supply chain issues that have been faced by everybody have impacted us this summer and, you know, kind of before the conversation around, you know, last year, supply chain or labor, and it, you know, it's, it's been more supply chain issue this summer than the labor issue. And, you know, we look at certain projects, the Oakville Elementary parking lot, for example, I mean, I mean, Castle Construction is wonderful in our eyes, they've been, they've been great partners on that project, and they, they have hustled to get done what they got done.
Yeah, I've driven by that many times, and you drive by it two days later and you're surprised at what they can do in two days. And I know a lot of that was permitting mess, but I think once we got that all done, they certainly have hustled and gotten that done post-aced. And the fact that it's just going to go into November is probably going to hopefully be just a conservative estimate and we get it done earlier.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
I can attest to that, I mean, living next door to it practically, and I walk that way every day, and the, on the weekends, they were there.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I even said, hey.
I was surprised to see them on the weekends, but since they had, what, 26 days of delays from permitting or something along those lines?
Well, I mean, we were delayed with permitting, they were trying to do as much as they could without the, without the permits, but once they got going, they got going.
Yeah, I mean, I drove by it and there's a big giant hole, and then three days later, it's like the hole's gone and they've got things filled in.
And that, I mean, if you go back to the spring, the winter, and we looked at the bids, I mean, one of the reasons that we selected them as the contractor was site work is their specialty, that's what they do. And they, in our estimation, they've done it pretty well.
I agree. So the other stuff that we sort of had the surprises on, I mean, once we knock walls down and things like that, we get surprises, was there an over percentage on surprises like that, or was it hopefully under what we were estimating?
So when, when you guys, when we ask you to approve the bids, we, we include a contingency, right? It's, you know, it's whatever the number is, including contingencies and features.
Right.
So if we look across all of our projects overall, right now, we're on the good side of that. If we look at projects individually, we got some projects that we may be right up next to it, or maybe, well, if we go over, we're going to, we'll be asking for your kind of approval for those in arrears. But in the, in the, across the, I'll say five contractors, as of right now, we're, we're under the overall contingency.
So a couple high, but most of them lower, so that all balances out on the better side?
It's balanced out, I mean, we've got the contingency plus there are allowances in their contracts as well.
So again, how much of the work is going to be done during the school year and how much of it is not going to be done during the school year? Is it all just going to chug through as best possible?
Well, it really depends on the location. So, you know, the interior of Oakville Elementary, I mean, I'm guessing ought to be wrapped up in 30 days.
Okay.
As should, I mean, Bernard and Rogers probably should be too, but Blades will go all year. The parking lot should be November at Oakville Elementary and Beerbomb will go all year.
Okay, so two of them that'll have this year-long disruptions, the rest should be done by end of September, maybe early October, not counting the OES parking lot?
Correct.
Well, that's encouraging.
We should be good, and then next up, we'll be, well, we'll be bidding the ball fields here pretty soon, and then Drought Wine, Hegeman, Washington, we'll bid, we, you know, kind of late winter, spring, we'll be doing, we talked about layer and point back into that, point was supposed to done this summer with issues with fire code, those have been resolved. So those are going to be coming up next, but the other thing that the current environment and the supply chain issues, you know, we have HVAC projects that we know that we're doing next summer too, right? Some in Prop S, some outside of Prop S. Normally, you know, we'd be bidding those January, February, March, right? We're talking to like October now of doing that, so that we've got the contractor selected and they've got enough lead time to get the equipment so that they can pull the job when we need it done next summer.
Sounds like it's going to be quite busy over the next nine months.
Well, you know, we like to be busy.
Thank you.
Do you have any desire, I know in, in your notes that you sent us, you're, you would like to have another set of eyes on the Melville ball fields, and you just said you're going to go out for bids soon. Would we entertain possibly hiring that company just for that project? I mean, it was like $6,000 or something, I mean, would it be worth it? There's so many sewers, that's what freaks me out, is all the sewers in the area.
So we, we talked to them, I pretty much asked that question, that if we only did this, does that turn you off? And they said no, but their body language said differently, you know, so I don't know if I necessarily, after that conversation, maybe we go, maybe I would ask them to, maybe I had would look, have somebody else take a look at it, who might be in the industry, somebody like Castle, to take a look at something.
And Castle did Oakville's, correct?
Castle's the one doing Oakville's parking lot.
They did their ball fields, yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. Yeah. So, so what are your biggest concerns about Melville's? Is the sewer systems that are out there?
No, just the, our cost, just cost.
Okay, just trying to get our.
So, I mean, but the, the plan for this ball field is we're walking away from this bottom part, right? I mean, our baseball field is on like the lowest place on this campus, so we're moving it up top.
I have a question really quick about that, this might be in-depth. Are they moving to a one-field model like OHS?
No, right, it's still two fields, right? Still two. So sort of like Webster's, right? I mean, not exactly like Webster, but they've got the movable fence between baseball and softball.
All right. Anybody else?
Yeah, I guess, because we know we had problems with the OHS ball field, right? So.
We didn't have problems with the field or the work itself, what it was, was another layer of material, right?
Right.
Yeah, the top coat.
And like the pitching mound, there was a problem with that too, right? And? Yeah. Yeah. Just, yeah, just want to, you know, like everybody, want to make sure that it's done, right?
I think the question you're trying to say is if they did it wrong and fixed it the first time, why would we go back to them a second time?
Well, that was just mentioned in oversight, but I know it sounds like there could be issues with finding, even finding anybody to have, you know, another set of eyes on it, but I appreciate, you know, the ability to do that just because it's a unique, it sounds like it's a, you know, it's a unique situation to deal with.
Well, I hope that if we go back to them for the, for MHS, they're going to make sure that they do it right the first time, because the issue they had the first with OHS, I'm, at least, I hope they'll do that.
Okay, are we done?
Zayn, yeah, sure.
All right. Let's move on then to future ballot issue.
Right. So, you know, the future could be 10 seconds, 10 minutes, 10 days, 10 months, 10 years. Right. So, you know, the future could be 10 seconds, 10 minutes, 10 days, 10 months, 10 years, and a whatever. But it's a start of school and typically at the start of every school year, there's a little bit of a review of material. So, we're going to turn back the clock a little bit and kind of review some things, uh, before we kind of think and look forward. So, we go all the way back about 15 months ago to May. That's when the board approved our initial ESSER plan, uh, which kind of laid out in broad strokes how we were going to use ESSER 2 and 3 dollars, the bulk of which was going to be learning recovery, a little bit for technology, some for food service, and, uh, to support HVAC projects, many of which Mike mentioned earlier. And with that learning recovery, we were going to do interventionists, uh, in buildings. We were going to do, um, some eye-ready stuff. We were going to buy some curriculum support materials. We'd have supports around data analysis, some after-school activities. We were looking at kindergarten camp, Chad's Coalition to port, to support, uh, um, social and emotional well-being at our high schools, as well as some other supports in our high schools. And this kind of was roughly the overall budget, uh, that got approved by the board about 15 months ago. Then, uh, Laurie Trader Larkin did a report to the board in February about, uh, kind of revisions to the plan. Kind of overall, uh, just some of the numbers moved a little bit. Uh, some stuff cost a little more than we thought it was going to cost. Some stuff a little bit less, so we shifted some pieces around. But, going back to, you know, that initial in May of '21, you know, we talked about that these funds will go away at the end of the '23, '24 year. And when those funds are gone, all the things that it pays for are gone. And kind of going into that with the notion that those supports would be gone. But, we've also been having conversations of how do we keep those supports, uh, beyond that? So, um, just a couple of months ago, um, gave an update around that, talking about how community has made decisions. We recalculate and kind of move forward. We talked about the possibility of bond issues and kind of where that may lay on our overall finance, uh, plan. And, you know, over the next four to six years, there were a lot of, you know, things that we need to think about in terms of, do we ask the community, uh, to support these pieces or not? And with that, we laid out, um, when we needed to ask those questions and we laid that out a number of different ways with election dates, when the board would have to make a decision, and, you know, all of this back in June. So, to layer in another piece to that, I mean, way back when, we've talked about, um, historical ballot measures and how we've done. So, relative to ballot measures, we pretty much have that information going back to about 1953. And whether or not there's been success in terms of building improvements or operations. And we can kind of see how, uh, we've done, uh, relative to those. Um, and here's another look kind of at that same piece of, uh, kind of what the district's done. And as we've talked about in the past or gone through, that, you know, there, there was not a lot of success in the eighties and nineties. Um, and then, so we went through a really long period of not asking, um, for, for anything. Terms of just the facilities pieces going back since '53, uh, this is kind of what we have an easy record of. Uh, most of these were bond issues, uh, up until 2000, uh, which did the lease through the cops, um, which brought forth some of its own challenges. And in our, our most recent, uh, measure in '21, the $35 million bond issue. It's interesting though to look at this and see how the numbers just go up over time as, uh, construction, labor and everything, uh, the price of everything kind of goes up, um, over time. So, if we look at what our estimated assessed value is right now, and we think about what does a penny of tax rate generate? It generates, um, you know, just between $225 and $230,000. Um, however, we don't get to collect all of that. Our collection rate, uh, is about 97.2. So, that means a penny in reality generates about $221,000. So, if we use that as a calculation, as we think about things and we think about the ESSER budget, and we think about the number of interventionists and after-school sports and all of these other pieces, um, that we have, it's roughly $4.6 million this year. So, if we take out the HVAC piece, we're down to about $3.6 million. So, 3.6 divided by the 221, and roughly, uh, it's going to take, uh, you know, in terms of round numbers, 17 cents to generate what it would cost to replace those supports. Now, that doesn't account for any cost increases of those things over time. The example is, let's say that we passed 2 cents, right? We had a 2-cent levy. It's generating $440,000 for the specific purpose of purchasing school buses. Well, what that tax rate is going to generate is going to increase slightly over time, but not a lot. But the cost of buses is going to go up quicker. So, that 440 may start off buying us four buses, but eventually, it's only going to buy us three, right? So, we've got it, that's something that we need to think about and account for. So, if we break the pieces out by elementary interventionists and supports, um, and what they cost and what tax rate would be necessary, uh, to just replace the existing cost. Not the future cost, but the existing cost. So, for the interventionist piece, it would take about 11 cents to replace the existing cost. For our after-school supports, um, about 3 cents. And for all of the other pieces, about 4 cents. Again, about 17 cents overall, uh, to replace the existing cost of those. But, that still leaves the notion of competitive wages, which we talked about in June, uh, unaddressed. So, if we go back to February of '20, um, there was a report from our, uh, competitive salary group, uh, that was made to the board and the board approved a definition of competitive that was the average starting salary in the metro area. So, the metro area basically being St. Louis, Jefferson and St. Charles counties, right? So, just pulling what, uh, current starting salaries are for teachers, because those are the easiest to pull, although we don't have Lindbergh's current-year teachers. Um, so, there's just this sampling. We're about $2,000 below that average starting salary. Um, so, just in terms of rough numbers, right? So, if we're 2,000 below on the average starting salary and we have roughly 800 teachers, right? So, we need, right, 2,000 times 800, we'll get about 1.6 million. We divide that by the 221 and we're in that nine or 10 cent range to bring us to that point in terms of replacement cost, but not including continuing ongoing costs relative to that. That's just rough numbers, right? And that's just with a handful of districts, right? We throw a bunch more districts in there, those numbers could change and become a little bit more precise. So, if you think about operating levy needs and questions, you know, the 34 interventionists, that's roughly 11. After-school supports, the other programs of three and four. So, you know, if we want to think about certificated salaries, how many pennies does that end up being? How many pennies does that end up being for classified salaries in terms of baseline, um, recovery cost, right? So, if you think about the impacts of different levels of tax rate increases, uh, potentially, on different home values, as home values have certainly gone up of, of recently, um, you can see what anything from 17 to 49 cents does, right? So, it's easy to calculate those. You just take the home value, you multiply it by 19%, divided by 100, and then multiply it by however many pennies that we're talking about. Get an estimated tax impact. So, going back to a previous slide around board decisions around, do we keep the ESSER-funded positions and/or activities? If so, um, the possible years to ask are either this year or next. Uh, to address competitive wages is probably this year or next. Uh, thinking about Prop A, maybe ending it early and doing it a bond would be next year. Ending, extending Prop A with or without an increase, uh, would be '24, '25 or '25, '26, so that's a little further out. And then, uh, we've talked about the HVAC issues that we'll have between 2026 and 2032. And the need for funds, um, to be able to address those issues. And I, I think the other thing that, you know, we've, we've never spelled out individually in terms of needs, uh, but I think it really kind of came to light a little bit more this summer, um, is really the amount of complete parking lot replacement that needs to happen across the district. I'm kind of, so, you know, we can continue, we could call that continuing maintenance and upgrades, but that may be kind of one of those line items that needs to be called out a little bit more specifically as a long-term thing that needs to be done. So, again, looking at that through a, um, a, a different lens, same information. And then, when would, when do those asks have to be decided for? So, if you think about this year, there are two possible election dates. One of those is in November. In order to put something on the ballot in November, basically we have 12 days to make a decision. Don't recommend that. If wanted to look at April of '23, the board would have to make a decision, um, before January 24th. January 24th is the day by which we would have to have the certification to the county. So, if, big if, capital I, capital F, bold underline, all of that stuff. If there was consideration of putting something on the April ballot, what information does the board need from the administration between now and January to make a decision? Whether to put something on the ballot or not?
Uh, I'll start. Um, the main thing I'm looking at is, um, ROI on the investment. And I think the main thing I'm focusing in on, I would love to keep the interventionists, because I believe that the interventionists are making a difference. However, if we have the same amount, if, if our enrollment hasn't changed and we have more teachers in the buildings, then the only, our, the only way that you can measure ROI is by academics improving somehow. So, I would personally love to see something that would show a tangible increase in academics. That way, we can measure what sort of ROI keeping the interventionists would, would bring. Is that, is that even possible?
It, it it's hard to look into aggregate and say that one thing made a difference over another. But if we look at individual student level and how an individual student who was working with an interventionist, how that individual student group, and then go to aggregate that in some way, then we can begin to show some return.
With FERPA, can we demonstrate individual student data?
Oh, we would not demonstrate individual student data to you. We would aggregate it before it came to you.
Okay, good.
But we can see that.
But it's possible.
Yeah, we can see that, yes. Because they, I mean, we, we, we give the assessments and we can see the results and we can see it at the student level.
Go ahead. Um, I agree with, um, the need for, um, evidence that the ESSER-funded interventionists, um, are necessary to maintain the, uh, repairs and lost learning. But, my main concern and my driving force is competitive salaries. We're losing teachers. I mean, the teachers are, are, that, if we don't have good teachers, we have nothing. We can forget about good grades, because we don't have good teachers. Um, if we keep stifling the wages on our classified employees, we have, say, a problem there. If you don't pay what the going salary is every in every other district, you know, we're going to constantly be fighting to get good employees. And who could blame them? You know, if they go five miles down the street and make another $5,000 a year, I certainly would.
We are, we are competing for labor like I've, I've never seen, right? But we want competitive wages across all classes of employees, right?
Yeah, that's, that's my point.
Not, not just one, one group. We really want to look at all, all groups. Um, you know, we, we continue to be understaffed in terms of, um, you know, facilities, custodians in particular, um, ground crew, uh, bus drivers, food service. Um, but, you know, we, we've also lost some folks in positions that are kind of unique positions and hard to find replacements for those positions. So, kind of all of that overall, and, and you know, from information that's been provided over and over and over again, you know, and I go back to an early slide around community decisions that have been made over time and the financial inputs from our community are some of the lowest in the county.
That's right. And, you know, and while I, I can appreciate your concern for stagnant enrollment, we have been spreading our workers out so thin with the number of students that we have now, that, yeah, I, I could imagine that if we hired another 20%, we're still going to be using them for too many things and too many students at one time.
It, um, talking about like, I think piggybacking on what everyone's saying as far as, you know, driving, what, you know, what are the results? What return on investment, um, wages and whatnot? And, and your question about what would help us, so, you mentioning, um, salaries, for example, and competing for labor like, um, never before. To be able to have that pulled together for us in a presentation that really kind of lines out, um, specific numbers with staffing holes and the amount of teacher loss, teacher turnover we've had. Um, I think comparisons to, um, student-to-teacher ratios within other competing districts that we tend to be compared to, um, where we, we're going to find ourselves, you know, generally, we're understaffed, like you said, with teachers, administrators, et cetera. Having those things lined out to really give us a clear picture would be really, um, helpful, I think.
So, I, I kind of have actually one of those numbers, because we, we shared it with the principals earlier this month. Our turnover rate this year, um, so retirements and resignations among our teaching staff, uh, was 8.4%. It, that, that's about a point, point and a half of what it's been higher than what it's been the last few years. Um, you know what the national average is? 8.4.
Wow.
So, we, we just got to, we had, historically, for the data that we have, we've been below the national average in terms of turnover and we just reached it in the transition from last year to this year.
All right, I want to say something about that real quick. If we're beating the national average by that much on turnover, that means culturally, we are doing something right, because people, teachers aren't leaving here. Um, I do agree with you, Gene. I, I, I agree with you, Gene, that we need to be competitive. And I would be in favor of making ourselves competitive with other districts. But, simply stating that if, if the national average for, for turnover in education is 8.4% and we're coming, or, I'm sorry, you said the national average was, our, our average was 8.4. What is the national average?
So, the national average and our average for last year, well, national average is 8.4. Our average from last year to this year is 8.4. Prior to that, we were running seven-ish high sixes.
Okay.
Right. And I, I, to this day, don't understand the loyalty, or how we deserve it. I don't.
But that's kind of the point too, um, is, right, it's the culture, so that...
So that's a wonderful thing that they've got that tie into the community and that they're wanting to stay and their loyalty, but how much do you depend on someone's loyalty for years and years and years and years and years? And it's, you know, and we're talking about student performance and all these other things that we want to increase. Do we not think that part of that comes with?
I totally agree.
Right, okay.
I mean, I, I am 100% behind the idea of being competitive with salary. 100%. We, we need to address that, for sure. I, I, my, my initial dialogue was based on the, the interventionists that were hired with the Esser Funds. And I just, to me, there just has to be some way to measure the efficacy of the interventionists that were brought on.
Well, and now, and I don't want to throw any water on that because I agree. But I think that our reports that we're starting to see from the various schools every month during our meetings and how their scores are rising is providing some evidence that we're doing the right thing.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I mean, I'm, I'm new enough to seeing these reports that I still, I'm, I'm still digesting them. But I guess what I would like to see is, is if there's a way that we could attribute, we believe these increases in education somehow are being attributed to these positions that we want to maintain.
Right. Well, and I, and I just think timing is pretty big on this because from the time they started to the time we started seeing the improvement in scores, had to do some, you know, there had to be connection there somehow.
Yeah. Here's another question for you related to competitive salaries. I can guarantee you that every other school district is talking about this right now.
Oh, absolutely.
So are we, when we looked at the salaries for the other districts, are we projecting that those salaries are going to increase at some level as well?
So it's interesting you ask that because if you look at our average teacher salary as measured by DESI and compare that to the statewide average salary as measured by DESI, the statewide average salary is growing, has been growing at a faster rate than ours. So although we can look at our salary schedules over time and see that we've made improvements in those, others are improving faster. So we're gaining, but our rate of gain is not that of our name, of, of others.
Sure, but I guess from a, from a ballot issue standpoint, you, you were showing numbers related to the fact that we're $2,000 below the average and what would be, what we would need to bridge that gap. And then you showed this, you know, what that was based off of. Are you, I mean, are, are you projecting raises for those other districts as well so that we know that what we actually have to do is not only, you know, increase our salaries next year and into the future, but we also have to outdo the raises that are happening at Lindbergh and Rockwood and Fox and the other districts?
So what I showed in terms of the 2,000 is what we would have to do today to be caught up to average tomorrow.
And that's only starting salary?
That's only starting.
So, so to answer your original question, I'd like to see salary targets, what that number looks like, and what, how many cents we would need to bring salary targets throughout our entire STEM system.
Yeah.
I know that's probably a lot of work, and I don't know.
And that's, that's actually come up as something we should be looking at this year. Because Marshall's wanted to go through and bring up salary targets so we can start planning for upperlay for now and into the future.
We, we have some historical data on looking at five specific, specific places within salary schedules across, at that time, what we deemed our competitors of being Parkway, Rockwood, Lindbergh, and Kirkwood being our, those being the four districts we lost more teachers to than anyone else. So we have some of that historical piece. And I, I'd say that the spreadsheets are built, we just have to have the data to plug into them to see where we are.
So, yeah, I mean, I think that would be, one thing I would definitely want to see would be salary targets, the exact numbers it would take to be competitive. And we, you've already stated that it'd be about 3.6 million to replace, or to replace the Esser Funds for the interventionists. So we know that number loosely.
10 cents.
Data, data on all of the other salary targets because, to your point of, we want to know how do interventionists help, well, one of the biggest helps will be not having teacher turnover. Because every time a new teacher has to come into the classroom, there's learning loss probably for a year or two compared to a seasoned and tenured teacher that already knows all of our processes. There's certainly some, not learning loss necessarily, but it doesn't help to have turnover. And then I really would like to see some kind of a survey to the community to see where we can push, how much we can push out there, and what we think would be approved.
I.
Go ahead.
I was going to talk about, when you look at the starting salaries, it was funny because us and Fox are tied, but Dr. Gaines will attest that there are some, like, teaser-rate districts. So there are some districts that will advertise a certain price, but over 20 years, they lag. So I was going to say, like, on that point, it would be interesting to see where Fox is and us are in year 20, because we start at the same amount, but where you can be at in year 20 is drastically different. And I didn't know if you had more on that point. I had two things I wanted to bring up as well.
No, just, just that we have to look at the whole schedule, not just starting salaries.
Are you going to bring up something else other than the, or can I make a comment about this?
Go ahead.
Or is it, or is something?
I have other stuff, but it's a different topic, so go ahead.
Other stuff, okay. Well, I'm just wondering, so you had mentioned with pennies applied from taxes to generate revenue, but that's for current. And when you're dealing with something like salary, where salaries, you know, it's not a one-time thing, it's ongoing and they, they increase, how, how does, how do you, like, compensate for salary increases as you're planning for, like, how do you, what do you, how do you do that?
All right, all right, well, you know, I had an old-school finance professor say at one time, the whole notion of school district finance is built on growth, right? And just, you have to have growth to keep up, right? So if you look across, if, if I had it, right, so you'll recall from historical presentations, we have whenever a district in the county has asked for bond issues and been successful, right? If you were to look at the same data, but instead of bond issues for operating levy to enhance salaries, some of those are happening, again, every six, seven, 10 years because it, I know, salaries are the easy thing, but it's not just salaries, it's salaries and benefits, right? Benefits are growing. The cost of benefits is going up. So the overall cost of salaries and benefits are just going to naturally grow faster than what the CPI is going to let us collect. Unless we have tremendous growth in our assessed valuation in terms of new construction, mostly. And, you know, ideally, business growth driving that, right? Because you get businesses paying taxes, that business doesn't send kids to school, right? But a home is not paying enough taxes, in property taxes, most homes are not going to pay enough in property taxes to fund the education of a child in a year. And a lot of those homes are going to come with more than one, one child, right? So just, I, I hate the way that, to say, the way the system is built, we're just not going to keep up. Now, there is this crazy caveat in that, and very few districts land and stay there. And that is, there is a minimum levy that school districts have the authority to tax, right? We're above that, right? Almost, I can say, well, I would say probably 70, 80% of the state, of the districts in the state are above that, right? But once you hit that minimum levy, then you're able to capture everything, right? You capture all growth, not just the CPI. But that is such a low point, at that point, the state is also somewhat penalizing you because they're holding money out of your formula more than you had ever collected. So it, it just gets real intricate in there, but as the general rule, local property taxes for us, which is the bulk of our revenue, is not going to grow at a pace fast enough to keep up with the inflationary measures that we have across all of our costs.
Hence why other school districts have levies more often, is kind of what you're, what you're saying, right? Except for us.
A lot of them will ask for things frequent, I mean, I like frequently, frequently, but, I mean.
Yeah.
Somewhat in a cyclical way, especially when you couple that with what at least most of us anticipate as stagnant state funding in the near future. I mean, we got a bump in transportation this year, that's good, but.
Yeah.
And the unfortunate lack of businesses in our district.
Right.
I mean.
Yes.
Brentwood is all district, all business and hardly any residential. There's only, what, 800 kids and they have so much money, so.
I'm sorry, Patrick, go ahead. Here's another way to look at things, I think, maybe, I mean, if we're talking about asking for a ballot issue, 15 cents or whatever, if we really boil it down to it, the, the rationale for that is to maintain the excellent performance that we've had and perhaps find ways to, that we can find improvement. That's, that's the rationale for asking for more money. One thing I wonder if we've considered, because we could be more aggressive with pay scale at the expense of not being able to afford the interventionist. And see, this is one of the reasons why I think we have to be keyed in on the efficacy of the interventionist, because, you know, if we do ask for a ballot issue, it's going to be X amount of cents or whatever. Well, I mean, we might decide we want to be more aggressive with, with wages for our existing staff at the expense of not keeping the interventionist. That might be a better strategy than keeping the interventionist and not being as aggressive with pay raises. I don't know. I don't know what the right answer is. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
I mean, there's, there's probably some interventionists that over that three-year time will transfer to be permanent staff. So, I mean, there's, there's going to be some conversions that potentially happen in that three-year time for people that are going to decide they like the environment and they want to be teachers here and they have an opportunity here.
Feedback from the community, as Peggy suggested, would help.
Yes.
To paint a better picture on exactly us talking about all of these things and Dr. Gaines presenting and, you know, giving us information where that leads us to as far as a target, right? And then, and then to your point, you know, you, that, that's, that's when you make those decisions.
Yeah, I guess, but I mean, like, the public isn't in the schools, and I have a feeling that.
But the public votes.
No, I understand that.
Trust me, you have to vote.
I understand that, but I mean, when we're talking about trying to be, trying, trying to strategize related to the best ways to spend our money in the classroom and whether that, whether or not that's being more aggressive with teacher salaries or keeping interventionists or some combination of both, I mean, I, I don't, personally, not being in the classroom, I'm not sure how to, how I would reconcile that question.
And perhaps that's where we count on our administrators to come to us with a better, you know, plan of the, what is best for our students.
Patrick, go ahead.
Quickly on that, though, I agree with Jeff. It's funny how I walked into our schools today and we have all these people leaving last minute. We've talked about that for a while now. But it's funny, interventionists are excellent recruiting because we have someone, we like them, they may have been a younger teacher, but then they get interventionist experience, they've been in our classrooms, they know our processes. And it's funny because I've seen several of the interventionists who moved from soft money to hard money, which is nice. But the thing I wanted to say, and Dr. Gaines will hopefully make me look smart, we know retirements are somewhat predictable because of PERS, PSRS, we know when teachers generally retire. And we also know, you know, there are only a certain amount of districts you can go to from our district in year five where you will come out ahead, the Parkways, Rockwoods, whatever. But I also think something we should highlight is this is going to get significantly worse because the input will not be the same in the future. College of Education enrollment is down. It's one of the fields where people are leaving and they're, I mean, listen, I like, you know, it's not fun to think about, but we're talking about, like, Grow Our Own, we have a bunch of solutions for this. But like, I looked at Mizzou's College of Education where I went, enrollment is up, but then you look at College of Ed and it's down. It's one of the industries where it seems the past 10 or 15 years of, like, teachers don't get paid enough, we've heard all these things, right? Like, as time goes on and there, you know, there's legitimacy to it, but then the pandemic was really difficult for teachers, healthcare, you know, with nursing, though, obviously salaries have, like, you know, risen pretty well. But with education, you know, there have been moderate increases, but then you look and you're like, there's going to be much more competitiveness when you, like, talk about Melville going to a job fair at Mizzou, Mo State, CMO, UMSL, Webster, wherever, and there's just going to be less kids who are graduating that year.
Right.
Like, there's going to be less input. Obviously, I don't think that happens drastically in any of our terms unless someone here is going for 15 or 20 years, but it's going to get worse, right? Dr. Gaines, I would say DESI is echoing that, like, rural districts are going to get really hurt when, you know, it'll, but we're going to be on the South St. Louis County island.
I would put it overall like this, right? Between roughly, well, starting in roughly the 50s and 60s, the enrollment growth in St. Louis County was a quarter million kids across the county. Since then, it's been stagnant to declining. So if you look at our enrollment and you go, why is our enrollment going down? Well, it's because we graduate more seniors than we get incoming kindergartners. That's a big part of it, right? So the exact same thing is happening in the education profession. We've got people retiring every year. For us, that's roughly 26 or 27 teachers is what we anticipate to retire every year. And, you know, so we've got to at least replace that. Some of those are going to be brand new. Some of those, we're going to recruit from other districts or we're going to be able to get from other districts. People have been talking about teacher shortage for quite some time, and other states have been feeling it for a while. Arizona, Oklahoma, specifically those two have been feeling it. In Missouri, it's been felt more by rural districts. This year, it came to the metro areas. It, it real, we started feeling it a little bit more. But it's the specialty areas that are incredibly difficult. Middle school, industrial arts, foreign language, facts, math, science, those specialty fields are getting increasingly difficult to find. Because if you think about, yes, enrollment among colleges of education are down, but then you break that down further into, then what are the certification areas that those students are heading towards? Then you really see kind of those niche areas significantly declining. I mean, I can remember a few years ago, I mean, DESI issued like three new certifications for physics teacher across the state. And that's not enough to fill the openings across the state. So it, it's a challenge and other states are coming up with very interesting ideas of basically, you know, we're, we're going to let about anybody teach who can pass a ground check. Well, that may be all nice and good, but we believe there's a level of expertise and art that goes into being a highly effective educator and not just anybody.
All right, so do we have a piece then?
I think we have a list of information that you'd like to have before you have to make a decision, before the next kind of. to make a decision, before the next kind of benchmark for a decision, so we can pull some of that together and we'll map it out, and how we lay that out to you over the next few months, as we get to that point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to action items by consent, if I can please get a motion to approve action items A through I.
Yeah.
No, A through L, A through L, so sorry.
I will motion unless someone wants to pull.
Nope, I don't need to.
I make a motion that we approve those action items?
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Patrick made the motion, Jean seconded. All right, that was a long list. Communications, standing committee reports.
We had a policy meeting this evening, very quickly, approved two policies, so got a few more coming down the pipe, but two got approved.
One of them was about dress code, and the other one was about compensating staff at IRS rates for mileage. Apparently, for some reason, we were compensating staff 2/3 of what the IRS said, so I'm very glad that we are, we have upped it to what the IRS says.
Rounding up the speed, yeah.
Yes, we need to do that.
Okay. The other one was on headwear, as Scott said, you know, taking into account ethnicities that, you know, many of them, the hijabs, and a lot of different reasons for a lot of different people to wear gear on their head, so we have to consider all of our different ethnicities, and it doesn't seem to be an issue, so.
We're allowing students to wear hats, bandanas, head wraps, and other head coverings, or that's what's going to be presented to the board.
Okay, anybody else?
Jeff and I were at the insurance meeting, and Marshall's hit on this before, Peggy, you've talked about it, you know, numerous meetings, and we're having another meeting pretty quickly after that, but the idea behind it was, we've heard this, claims skyrocketed, you know, went to, what, 22 or 23%?
23%, it was projected at like, 3.
You know, costs are going up, we've heard that too, you know, medical care, insurance costs, and so it's been a really tedious process for the insurance committee to come together with a plan that doesn't hurt our employees with their benefits, and it sounds like some tax revenue might offset that, and that's kind of pending right now, so we're kind of waiting on that.
Yeah, it's the trick of trying to figure out how to balance out obvious increases in healthcare costs and not try to put that on the employees in as little or in any way as possible, because obviously, if we're having questionable salary because we're trying to compete, you have to obviously use your benefits as a balancing act to your salary, so if those start to degrade in some way, just by the simple fact everything is going up across the board, you have to find some creative ways to try and not inflict it on the employees if you can.
Right, and that we're self-insured and we have to keep a reasonably healthy bucket of money, and that's been a challenge.
Especially trying to keep it from dropping off a cliff and trying to, if it's going to decrease, do it in a some, somewhat sort of a control manner, rather than something that's going to start a shock to that fund balance.
Dr. Gaines, I've got a question real quick, my apologies, I didn't see the actual language in the policy related to the mileage reimbursement, but will the new policy state that it's 58.5 cents, or will it state that it's the, we're compliant with IRS standards?
IRS.
All right, good, because I'd like to make sure that we increase it as the IRS does.
Okay, anybody else?
The only thing with, that I don't do, that we, with SSD, it looks like we are going to have a PAC, Adam has been working very hard on that, it sounds like they just had their second meeting, I just talked to Adam briefly before, so we are getting an SSD PAC, it sounds like, let's say, I don't know, let's say conservatively sometime by the end of the fall semester.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, if I could, we don't have any patron comments for the end, very good, if I can get an authorization to close, a closed session?
Motion, oh, sorry, motion to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading amendments of previous meetings and corrections and approval of same and other items under the Missouri Revised Statute 610.021, subsections 1 through 21, and 6.10.022, subsections 1 through 6, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting particular employees, section 610.0213, and individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applications for employment, section 610.02113. Legal action causes of action or litigation, section 610.0211.
Jeff?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Tori?
Yes.
Peggy, yes?
Jean, yes.
Patrick?
Uh, yeah.